So we'll start here and then we'll go down the line. Oh, sorry. We'll start with El Dorado. The first question and then everyone else will answer and we'll come back to... So the question is, what is the most significant thing you've done at home, at work, in government, on the community to help protect our fragile planet? Please name just one action and if possible quantify its results. So 90 seconds for this.
Well, I want to thank QCAN for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. I just want to let you know before we got these questions, I was thinking up this back in college again and was going through a course and trying to find all this information. All of you are the activists, all of you are the specialists that understand this a little bit more than I do. I like to facilitate this information to the specialists, bring you all in, and then work on these issues. And that's what I'm facilitating at the city council level, is to allow people like yourselves to have that conversation. This past year, I was in the living room of QCAN, going through a meeting, talking about what we're going to do at the city council level. And what we initiated was the electric cars. What we did with that at the city council level, we brought a resolution forward with Council Finn and Council Nigaliang. We put it forward to ask the mayor to allow this electric car for some of our fleets of cars out there. That's part of the emissions. We put it forward. We gave it to the mayor to recommend and see if he would like to act on it. And that's what we're initiating. So for me as a councillor at large, what I've done over the last two years has initiated some type of progress with allowing and facilitating this information. I listened to all of you. I listened to QCAN and I moved it forward. That's what I'm willing to do in the next two years as your councillor at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Representing Ward 1 for the last eight years, I've represented the most vulnerable coastal district in our community and I've spent a lot of time working on this matter. Right off the top of my head, I can talk about tide gate controls at Post Island, our coastal infrastructure, the repairs to the seawalls, the outfalls, the removing of silt from our catch basins being cleaned. Our marsh restoration project, I remember working with the Ponset River Watershed Association and we were working on projects along the Ponset River. We were able to leverage those funds and bring them over to Brahmanos Marsh. We took a 40-acre salt marsh restoration in Brahmanos Marsh. By showing hands, who's walked out Brahmanos Marsh? It is spectacular. I was just there this past weekend with my family. I walk on the dock. Marsh restoration, these soft solutions, as we were bringing forward some of the seawall planning for the section we're working on now, we've got a grant for, that I actually brought the engineer, brought him around, showed him the most vulnerable areas, talked about repetitive loss, talked about why it was so important and advocating for us to qualify for this funding. And we talked about what are the other soft solutions? What can we do on the water side of the wall? What about natural breakwaters? What about some of these artificial reefs? What about opportunities to slow that wave energy down on the water side of the wall? So we're preventing the homes and reducing flooding. I think we've done a lot of work with the city, with the citywide seawall assessment to reduce flooding. Edgewood Drive, one of the worst chronic flood areas, has been dry. We've replaced that outfall pipe and these are projects not only did I advocate for, I worked on, I executed and stayed in touch with my constituents.
Thank you. I know I'm short on time, but I do just want to take a moment to thank all of you at QCAN for having us here tonight. So the question about what we've done in our personal lives or what we've done at work to move towards, you know, reducing our carbon footprint here in the world. When I was working with my family's restaurant group, as I'm sure all of you are aware, restaurants have a lot of waste, whether it's the takeout containers, the takeout materials, or the food itself. And one of the 10 restaurants that we opened and that I had a part and was able to open, we actually were opening an LEED-certified building. And so we went to composting and it was new for all of us, the staff, the management team, but it was a great benefit. We found that although on the front end, it looked like it was going to be more costly because we had to pay for different bags, we had to pay for training for our staff to make sure that we're sorting things properly, on the back end, we ended up saving money in less than a year. The reason for that is because what we were throwing out in waste was in compost and the cost to actually compost was less than what we were paying for the trash. And so we found that the amount that we paid for trash removal in the building went down, so our cost went down with the landlord, and then our cost for composting ended up balancing out that we had more savings than not. So that's just one example and that's something I'd like to bring forward as my role as your city councillor as well. We have a lot of growth, a lot of development here in the city. There's no reason why we can't implement that same LEED-certified mentality, excuse me, to get all of our apartments and the new restaurants to go forward with composting. And that's just one step that we can make, I believe, to, again, reduce our carbon footprint. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. So this isn't something that's new to me. I've been following the issues of green housing for many years and the reality of it is that we have to do more in the city of Quincy personally. At our own home, we do recycling, we do composting. And in the schools, in the Quincy Public Schools, where I've been on the school committee for the last 12 years, we were encouraging education in the schools to make sure the kids understood the value of recycling, composting, and the things that they can do in the future for themselves. I see one of the teachers here in the audience here tonight. The reason why this is so important is that the solutions that we are having now, it's getting more cost-effective for us to be able to bring those solutions to Quincy, but we're kind of behind the eight ball of what we're doing. And we need to get more proactive in our community so that we can actually catch up to where we need to be. But we also have to make sure that we're putting the information in the schools that our students have the opportunity to see the future of where they want to go because it's an economic engine as well. It's the future for their, where they're going to be going to. So there's multi-prongs to the environment that we need to be looking at and we have to look at it globally too because we have a lot of responsibility that's happening here in the city of Quincy. The development that we're having, we have to also look at what we're doing and how we're doing it in the city because it is impacting our community because we're not taking into consideration where those waters are going to go. And that is one of the reasons why we've had so many problems in the city of Quincy with flood issues. So this is a big issue. It's not going to be solved in 90 seconds, but it is something that we do have to discuss and stay on top of and be proactive about it. And we haven't been proactive enough. But I thank everybody for being here because it's a beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, QCAN, for the invitation. Thank you all for coming. It's a pleasure for me to be here. My name is Dan Lemondi and I'm one of the candidates for councillor at large. Out of the many things that I've accomplished, both in my personal life as well as publicly, what I'd like to focus on tonight or to answer this particular question is open space because I think that's on the minds of perhaps many of you in having a long-range, not only plan, but also a funding source to guarantee that whatever the needs of the city are, whether it's an economic upturn or an economic downturn, there's a steady funding source that can provide the necessary revenue in order to enhance, rehabilitate our parks, playgrounds, open space acquisition, beaches, and so forth and so on. So we start with the city budget and we know that police, fire, schools usually have the top priority, as well they should. And if things are not going so well, things like open space acquisition, obviously playground maintenance, things like that, take a turn for the worse. So I decided to do something about it. And I wrote a hotel-motel legislation that in the beginning had tremendous amount of opposition, but we persevered and led the way. And since the enactment of that law, signed by the council, signed by the mayor, approved by the House of Representatives, Senate, signed by the governor, $15 million have come into the city strictly to improve our parks, playgrounds, open space acquisition, and beaches. Thank you very much.
I definitely agree that we should be clean. We should have a clean city. We should be efficient. I believe all those things. But there's one thing that is on my mind and that is, how far do we go? What I want to say is, what do the people want? Do they want somebody who is looking out for their best interests? Who, yes, wants to modernize but not globalize? Someone who wants the best for the city and lower the costs as much as possible that they have to pay out of pocket for their taxes? Or do they want someone who's a salesman for special interests? Who wants to peddle every single ware cottage industry of the global warming industry? I come with a little bit more knowledge. I'm a software engineer with 30 years of experience. I have my name on a patent. I developed surgery over the internet. So I understand a lot of things about technology and I've been studying this issue for years. And please elect me. Thank you very much.
So the next question, and we'll start with Mary. What is the number of things you've done? And this one is a quick one. What would be your target for renewable energy as a percentage of the city's energy base?
So right now, the Massachusetts public policy requires 15% of municipal energy to come from renewables by 2020. It increases to 25% by 2030, 45% by 2050. These are great goals and I hope we achieve and exceed these levels before they're required. Ideally, I'd like to see Quincy reach 100% and have net zero energy.
Thank you for the question. I too would be really excited if we're able to do 100% of our power with renewable energy. But I think our strength as a municipality is actually in reduction of the energy that we have right now. So I know that the city has set out a goal along with QCAN to have a 20% reduction over the course of four years. And I believe in the beginning of that, we were reaching about 1% of that 4% over the five years. And so I'd like to reinvigorate that process and that program to see if we could do another 20 in the next five years and reduce it by 4% each year. You know, I was in the council when we were able to change over the lighting from LED streetlights, oh, I'm sorry, over to LED streetlights. And over time, that's actually going to save us 40% in energy savings to set one conversion alone. So as your councillor, I'd like to continue to move forward with ideas like that so we can reduce our overall energies. Thank you.
So again, Quincy came up with a plan in 2012 and it's 2017 and we haven't had a re-benchmarking to know what really we are doing in the city of Quincy. So when it comes to our greenhouse emissions that we are exhausting in the city of Quincy, we need to know what we need to go after first. Everything is after what we should be going after first, but really what we should be focusing on is our buildings and making sure that they're the most energy-efficient that they possibly can be. And with our focus being by 2050 that we're 100% efficient within our buildings and if we could shoot for 80% for our community, that would be great. That's a stretch though without benchmarking within the city to understand exactly how we're going to go about doing that and analyzing it more often than once every five years. We should be doing it every year and getting a report on the council to know how well we're doing.
I agree with what has been said. The city's goal, the ultimate goal ought to be 100%. We ought not to be satisfied or comforted with 20, 40, 50, 60. The goal ought to be consistent movement positively towards that particular goal. And we need to have an identifiable plan, so there needs to be an inventory and an audit so that each and every aspect of renewable energy is targeted with a certain percentage if that matter has been resolved within a particular period of time. So it's important that with the LED conversion and with solar, we're pretty much, well, we're nearing the 20%, but we need to have that improvement each and every year to attain our ultimate goal, which is 100% renewable energy.
I was there in the city council meeting when they voted for the LED lights and I don't know if you're aware of what the cost to the taxpayer is. What I'm trying to say is there has to be a balance between energy savings and the cost to the taxpayer. And that's what we're looking for for all of these goals. Thank you.
It always happens. As everybody said earlier, I'd like to go with benchmarks on a yearly basis, starting with 20% and see what we can do in 5% increments over a year, three-year, five-year, and 10-year benchmarks and see where we're at. You know, I would like to target and focus on the renewable energy from direct sunlight and heating and lighting for our buildings and our public buildings. Being on the school committee three years ago, we installed all the solar panels on every single school, 12 schools, and we turned the switch on and we got some renewable energy. That was a start in going into the right direction for our schools. As we did our roof replacements, we also did the solar panels and that was moving in as well as the LED lighting. Thank you.
If the city could take any action to combat climate change, not including the things we are already doing, which action would get the most dramatic results in cost savings and/or greenhouse gas reductions? And what will you, as a councillor, do to encourage Quincy to take this action? Two minutes.
I think there's a number of things that we could be doing simultaneously as a city to reduce our footprint. A couple of them that come to mind that I'd like to initiate right away. It's one that I had touched upon earlier with the composting. Again, being LEED-certified as a building is a national recognition and in order to go ahead and get that certification, you have to go through a lot of steps in that building, such as making sure that recycling is happening, hazard waste is being disposed of properly, trash is going in the right containers, everything's being sorted, and composting for those buildings that also have food facilities inside those places. Again, we are growing very quickly as a city. A lot of buildings are going up. And even if you don't have an office park with, you know, restaurants on the bottom, you do have apartment buildings and these apartment buildings do generate waste in both recycling, trash, and composting. And we're not doing that yet. And so moving forward, I would like to incentivize these buildings to move in that direction right away before they start building. If they're already developed, they can still go down that process. And that's something that I'd like to do in ways of either contracting it with the company that can give us competitive pricing, working with our current buildings to create separate bins for this, or working with our current office parks to make sure that inside each office, they have accessibility to these three bins as well. Another thing I'd like to work on is making sure that we have charging stations to promote the use of electric vehicles across the city. Again, going back to development, we are changing our infrastructure, we're changing a lot of sort of the core downtown areas of our city. And as we're building new buildings and fixing the sidewalks, putting up new streetlights, putting up new trees, so too should we also look at putting in charging stations because it's not just the folks that will be living in this building. In the future, folks now here in Quincy are moving towards use of electric vehicles and we need to make sure that we're promoting that and that we have accessibility for folks to come in and use that. Thank you.
So thank you very much. This is a three-pronged issue and it comes to how we can promote and utilize and mitigate the problems in the city of Quincy. One of the things that we have to do is we started with the solar energy, but we need to buy more alternative energy for our city to be able to do things. It has to be affordable. We have to research and we have to understand wind power. We have to look at alternative ways to be able to power our city. It might be even with microgrids. We have to find other ways to actually bring solutions to the city of Quincy. The other thing is we need to save more. You know, the idea that energy efficiency is costing us more on the taxpayers, it's actually going to cost us less if we invest correctly, but we can save more by actually looking at our buildings again and focusing on that goal to get them 100% efficient by the time 2050 rolls around. And those new buildings that we're building that are municipalities, they need to be self-sufficient net-zero buildings. We need to look into those to figure out how we can afford to do that and cost it out over time to make sure it's an investment that we can afford and it's an investment that's well worth putting our money into. And then finally, we need to promote, we need to promote other ways to be able to bring solutions to this city of Quincy. And electric vehicles are those, but it's not just for cars, it's for buses. It can be our school buses. The cost of a school bus might cost us more money in the investment upfront, but it lasts longer and the fuel costs are actually less money. And there's other things we need to be looking at in the city of Quincy so that we can focus on our future because it's a health risk when you have those gases that are coming out that are causing health concerns for us if we have electric vehicles that would prevent some of those health concerns that we have. You know, there's also an educational opportunity for our students within our schools and there's also an economic engine part that's driving. If you have, if we promote and we actually live by the rules of making our city a green city, we entice people to come here and open businesses to be here in the city of Quincy. So it's not just about buying, but it's also about the future. And then it's also, finally, I'll always go back to education because it's an opportunity once again to bring those solutions into our schools and educate our students on how to be the future leaders in these as we go forward. So we have to look at it as a full, full global opportunity for the city of Quincy and then bring it back into how it can be promoted from all the way from schools all the way to our seniors and how it can be taxed, the tax incentives can be here too. There's grants as well. There's so many ways we can go, but we can't go until we start actually doing it and doing it is now.
It's disappointing that in 2017, with a $300 million budget, we don't have an electric vehicle in our public fleet. Resolutions are not enough. I'll be very disappointed over the next cycle between this election and the next if we don't have at least one electric vehicle. I think it's important that we send a signal that the city continues to send proper messages to even the private companies and private homeowners that electric vehicles as part of a fleet is the best way to go. But I want to talk about making Quincy a multi-dimensional transportation city. Walking, bicycling, things like that. So we need to keep on moving to improve our infrastructure, our roads. Our roads need tremendous repair and that affects gas mileage. We need to fix our sidewalks so folks can walk better. We need to have a bike sharing program, bicycle racks. We need charging stations both for the public as well as private companies. So if we're permitting locations with garages, we need to make sure that they have changing charging stations. So it's a more comprehensive look at removing vehicles off of the streets, having people feel safe and friendly, that they can walk, bicyclists have lanes that they can properly navigate. And the good work that's been done in the school system, we need to replicate that across the city with our public buildings. You know, that would be the next horizon for tightening windows, repairing doors, tightening up the infrastructure, continue to remove infiltration into our sewer system. That's huge to make sure that all of our infrastructure programs are working properly. So for me, it's more of a holistic, comprehensive approach to make sure that we're doing everything we can to get to that renewable energy goal.
You know, like I say, I look at this and I say, we need to be balanced between the cost to the taxpayers and the money that it will save in the long run and the efficiency. I'm all for efficiency, like I said, but to me, there's another agenda. I saw a YouTube video, it was really good. It was a table a little bigger than this and it had marbles that were stacked up very high. And then the person took out and said, okay, that's the amount of CO2 in the atmosphere. And he took out about maybe four or five marbles and he basically said, what they want you to do is to shackle yourselves so that you can take one marble away to decrease the global CO2. And when you look at it in perspective, it's laughable. I was there at the State House to testify against the carbon tax with another person in the audience here who is running for state rep. And we basically came forward and testified the reality of the situation. And I'm, like I say, I'm all for being efficient, but there's a limit and you have to have the wisdom to understand the difference. And if you're looking for someone with the wisdom to look at to say, okay, does Quincy really need this? Is it going to be really helpful? Then please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, we need to educate the public and by doing that, we have a lot of different resources we can do that. We have a citywide website. We can also use other sites like Nextdoor and other sites where people can get on electronically and push this information like activists like yourself to get this information out there. Have consensus, have different meetings on these things. Or, you know, constituent service be involved with this as well at the mayor's office, the administration, the city council, the school committee, where everybody can collaborate and give this information in communication. You know, we're looking to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Some of the topics that always come to my head is use less heat and air conditioning inside our buildings, drive less and more efficient vehicles, obviously they have talked about. Buy more efficient products, appliances. Do something what the stores do like Home Depot and Lowe's where they give you back a rebate for $50 if you buy the new appliance, whether it be refrigerator or dishwasher. Return the old one, take in the new one. We should be doing that and outfitting all our appliances to the city of Quincy as well. Giving rebates back to our consumers like yourself in the city of Quincy, having a rebate program for that. Use less water, obviously. We can hand wash, we can use it by cold or warm water. And also have computerized light systems where when you leave this building today, in 15 seconds, it's going to go off. And have that outfitted even in churches like this that are a little older. And like I said before, we need to educate, encourage others to conserve in general. Thank you.
So I'm just going to repeat the question. If the city could take any action to combat climate change, not including things we're already doing, which action could get the most dramatic results in cost savings and greenhouse gas reductions? How many of you have noticed a public outreach campaign about the gas leaks? You've seen the phone polls with the signs on notifying a gas leak. Have you noticed those in your neighborhood by showing hands? Yep? So you'll be out walking in the neighborhood and on the phone poll, you know, you could have a missing pet or now they're having a PR campaign about, hey, be aware there's a gas leak in your area. Every time I leave Blessed Sacrament Church, there's a strong gas odor. They have them fix it. I personally called it in and it's a matter of, it encroaches the MWRA sewer line, so we're having that addressed when we're addressing the sewer. But I want to hold National Grid accountable. This is having a major impact on greenhouse gases in our community. I would recommend the mayor and the public works director partner with National Grid to encourage they repair these longstanding leaks to their infrastructure and they help reduce the greenhouse gases in our community. I lived in the house I grew up in and we recently had the gas main replaced, maybe 10 years ago. And, no, eight, I was new to office at the time and I was speaking with National Grid about what the expectations were. And the employee said to me, my first day on the job 30 years ago, I worked in this leak in front of your own home, they've never fixed it. I would like to see more extensive and inclusive community engagement as to what effects these gas leaks have and what role the general public can take through these advocacy channels. These utilities are not too big for us to take on. Case in point, I'm working and partnering with Councillor Crowell on the Spectre compressor station. That's a federal application, a lot of homework, the environmental permitting alone. They're reading about the desolate area and I'm over here saying, jeez, I live across the water and I've seen the bald eagle and the most wildlife I've ever seen. This is in a desolate area. We need to protect these environments and we need to hold these utilities accountable.
Great system. Questions for everybody initially. Do you know Quincy's recycling rate? Does anybody can raise their hand? You know the recycling rate? How many people?
I know Ward 1 has the highest recycling rates. We could use barrels. The higher programs prove to be true. If you increase the barrel, they increase the rate. So Ward 1 have pilot in the trash room. I don't know.
So percentage overall is 15%. So 15% are recycling, which is quite poor compared to other towns and cities in Massachusetts that are the same size. So the question for Ann Lee is, what advantages would result from increasing our recycling rate and how could the city make it happen in 90 seconds for us?
So one of the things that we do and we need to do better at is educating the public on the value of recycling. I know that we talk about costs, but really educating them and also teaching them. There's so many ways that we can teach them. We have QA TV that we can use, we have a website, we have YouTube that we can teach them. And really kind of educate people. Cambridge does it really great where they go out to, they go to things that are going on in the community and they talk about their recycling and they talk about their composting and they do it in a YouTube fashion where it's getting people excited and engaged. And we have to do that, we have, the excitement has to start though, right from city hall, right from the mayor's office all the way down. And it has to go through the mayor's office, the DPW, to the schools, and out to the general public. And really, when you talk about recycling, sometimes people don't think it's very glamorous. But, you know, knowing what you can recycle, how you can recycle, and how you can package that recycling bin and make it a challenge in your own home, you can even create an atmosphere where it can be, you know, students can win things or our families can be engaged to win things. But really have to make it so that the whole community is engaged and want to recycle. I use an example of my dad. My dad, my dad's 90 years old. He saves the newspaper plastic and he recycles the newspapers into these cute little tubes and it's like a whole week's worth of newspapers that he throws out, but it's very organized and very packaged well. And the reason why I say that is my kids have been taught that too. And when you actually look at different generations and how they're approaching things, it's something that we all do, but we need to encourage people and be able to educate them on how we can do it and make it part of the whole community and be engaged in everything that we do from every environment that we do.
As Commissioner Public Works, it was one of our goals to educate the public and go into the schools and educate the youngsters about the significance of recycling, not only for the environment, but also the economic reality is, at the time that I became commissioner, we were spending about $90 to dispose of our trash. $90 a ton. And we renegotiated that contract and got it under $70. There was about a $3 million savings over a 10-year period by doing that. Recycling is a significant way for the city not only to attain its goal of having zero trash and having the recyclables being used to convert to energy, and that's what perhaps can happen and/or reused back into society, but it's a way for us to save money as well. So when we renegotiate the contract with our trash collector, we mandated in the contract that they make a robot for us. And we put that robot to good use. Mr. Leonard is here, those of you who may know him, the science instructor that retired from Quincy High School. We go into every third grade class and teach those kids the significance and the importance of recycling. We did two newsletters a year promoting recycling, twice a year, and all the other programs that we have trying to get the word out that recycling is a very important aspect of what we should be doing as a city.
I have to say, I agree with a lot of what has been said, but to understand things, you've got one thing on one end with the taxes going up, and then you've got the other with trying to become globalized and trying to reduce energy. I understand reducing energy, I do, because some of the stuff I designed, I worked on some of that stuff. But basically, there is a state senate bill, S-1959. It is going into a hearing on October 24th, and it is to put the toll roads on all of the roads around us so you won't be able to have a, go anywhere without a transponder and paying a toll. And they're going to toll different vehicles at different rates to control your choices. And I started a statewide ballot initiative to try to get ahead of this. And I will be there to testify on October 24th that people do not need this invasion into their privacy. And I am at large looking out for people, whether I'm elected or not, and that is who I am. Thank you.
I've got microphones coming from all ages here. It's going to sound a little different. Let's throw a line for two years ago, sat in the same exact seat, spoke to you about the recycling program and how they want to initiate a new recycling barrel system in the city of Quincy. Put that forward, and it's up to the mayor's office right now. It's something that's an investment, it's not a cost, it's not an expense, it's an investment, but we get the return now. And the return is that the trash will be 64 gallons and the recycler will be 96 gallons. So you're going to force people out there to recycle, and that's going to educate them to start with. Then we need to educate the public on how to do this. In Abington right now, if you don't put your recyclable up, they won't take the trash. So how do we, as a city council, come in and put an ordinance in or put a rule in and initiate this? You have to put your recyclable up, it's 96 gallons, they won't take your trash, it's 64 gallons. Trash should pile up really fast, wouldn't they? And it also forces the consumer or the person in that household to recycle. Great way, the Abington did a good job of that, and ask other people and they say, you know what? I have to do it, so I do it. And actually, in the long run, saves money. This is something that Quincy needs to move forward. We need to look outside at other municipalities and what they're doing and what's working for them and institute it in the city of Quincy. The next two years, I'll be looking to institute this as an investment. Mark Oss, thank you.
Thank you. I agree, I just mentioned the larger size barrels, it's visibility, it's awareness if they see, you know, we all live in this room, we're all in televisions, making the DPW get a sticker put on the barrel. They put up two barrels of recycle, even a half barrel of trash, very small, small trash up in our home. The city has a lot more opportunity to increase the rate, we're just trying to care how low it is. The multi-unit developments, I was referring to projects, this is part of our discussion about incorporating the cycle and designing it into the buildings. But a lot of the older, high-rasters were built in our city, recycling was not streamlined in our community. What about our municipal buildings? What are we doing? And the council, those of our people in the council know, I literally checked the trash every council meeting, this is all this paper in the barrel, and I am the one pulling out my recycle there. It's true, ask them, all the offices, I think every such trash barrel has to have a recycle barrel next to it. I really feel there's some opportunity, I know that high schools, I see them here, have some green teams. What opportunities are there for community events? And I see them out there, they do a great job, in fact, they have artistic recycle events. I really feel we need them, empowering them to help reach, improve our goals for our recycle rate could be beneficial for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe that there are a lot of advantages to increasing the amount of recycling that we have here in the city. I am also appalled that it's only 15%, that is incredibly low, and I think it's something we need to work on from all fronts, whether it's the private life or public life, in our public buildings or in our homes. I think some of the advantages to having increased recycling, you know, aren't going to be long-term, but education is of course one of them. We need to make sure that we're starting young, we're going into the schools, we're teaching kids, we're offering materials for them to bring home to their parents, because then you're not just starting with the child that you're talking to so that they can then in effect implement these things as they get older, but you're reaching the families through these kids as well with the schools. And we did have a program in the city where you get a discounted, a discount card when you go to pick up a recycling bin. You know, a lot of families across the city I see have the older, smaller bins. And if we're going to promote recycling, we need to incentivize folks here to get the larger bins so they can recycle more within that one week period. I had the opportunity to travel last year actually to Taiwan, and we talked to the mayor of Taipei there, and his city council, one of the city councils was scratching his head and he said, we can't figure it out. And I said, what's that? And he said, we put out this program to enforce recycling, and if you mixed it, then you would get fined for it. And so a lot of families across Taipei, the city, had upped their recycling. So the amount of waste went down about 20%, the amount of recycling went up 15%, they can't figure out what their extra 5% went. Where did that trash go? And, you know, they were all sitting there, they all laughed like that, and we did too as well. But I think the point to that was, people had less waste. And that's what we need to do here, because at the end of the day, that's going to help our road problem that we have here, it's going to make sure that we're being mindful as well of the city. And at the end of the day, I can't say it enough, it's going to help us save costs. Thank you.
The next question is for Jennifer Monty. So to increase our lower second rates, the city is planning to give all residents standard-sized trash recycling cards. Would you sponsor a measure in city council to let the city to add a third card for food waste, which would then be sent out for composting or composting bins for people's yards? As you can, so keep in mind that composting would cost us less per ton than what we're paying to burn our food waste, and that it would substantially increase greenhouse gas emissions.
What I would prefer to do is that we have a pilot program and we invite, there are a number of companies out there, some dispose of the organic, others recycle it and some use it. They would sell the organic to farms, some would use the organic to create better compost and others would burn it. So there are companies out there that, if a group like Qcan or others, if they agree to have so many customers for this one company that I, wow, sorry about that. So I would prefer to have a pilot program, and if you get a company, if sufficient enough residents sign up for this program, they will recycle the schools' organics at no cost. So there are some exciting opportunities there, and it's a terrific way to save money. DEP indicates that perhaps half of our trash is organic. You take that out, we can save a tremendous amount of money. But I think we have to make sure that it's workable, because that could have negative consequences if it does not. So I think the combination of a private company and what I suggest may be very important.
I agree that if there's better ways of disposing with trash, we definitely should do them. I don't agree with things like buying special containers with RFID chips on it to track people as to what they output. That's simply invasion of privacy. Yeah, I believe that there should be some sort of a method for separation of trash and it should be disposed of properly. And if it can be composted, great. I'm all for that, but it requires research.
If you could, could you repeat the question?
So to increase our lower second rates, the city is planning to give residents standard-sized trash recycling cards. Would you sponsor a measure in city council to let the city to add a third card for food waste, which would then be sent out for composting or your composting bins for people's yards?
As you do this new recycling program, this would be a great time to install this program, food waste as that third measure. Looking forward into the future here for the next few years, the something we have to consider, the mayor's looked at this, the city council's looked at this, I've talked about this prior, two years ago, it was in the newspaper, The Patriot Pleasure, talking about what we do not know. You as activists have told us, sat down in Qcan's, literally, in the meeting, talking about this exact measure. I'd like to institute it into the next sphere with our recycled and food waste and recycling program. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, I took a trip out to Seattle, visited friends out there, and I was very surprised that they had curbside composting, that was very new to me. And I actually came home, went to DPW, we were selling compost without a DPW, a model for my own household waste. I think this is a very creative idea, I'd love to see something piloted.
The answer to the question, yes, absolutely, we should be doing composting. I feel like a broken record because I've been talking about this so much, but we really do have net savings from composting. Yes, on the onset, it's a little bit more expensive because you are buying different bags, they do not have chips in them, ours did anyways. But, you know, again, at the end of the day, we saw real savings. As a business, you know, what we're paying for our waste every week ended up getting reduced in less than a year, even though we were paying for those new bags. You know, Quincy has an opportunity to be a real leader in this right now. You know, we have examples from the West Coast, we can set the example on the East Coast for our neighbors here in New England, and hopefully even further. You know, we can go ahead, start composting the buildings we currently have, and make sure that any new buildings coming down the pike are also doing that, and offer incentives to residents across the city and make sure that they understand, yes, it might be expensive on the front end, but in the long run, you will end up saving money. So yes, absolutely, we should. Thank you.
I think absolutely we should too, but I'm going to take a step back. Before we jump into the let's get going and have it on the sidewalks, I think we really love to look at what Cambridge has done, what Arlington has done, what Somerville has done. They've been successful, they started a pilot program, they got grants to do it, they investigated what their community's desires were, they found that they educated the public and they brought people to the table and they had people ready to do the pilot. We need to do that here in Quincy too, because the way you make something successful is by bringing it to the people who want to do it first and let them show you the way. If you just go out and just make it something for the community, we're not going to be successful, because if you're enforcing it on people, they're not going to do it, and we're going to have really small percentages of people doing it. So we really need to look at our community, see who wants to do it, and really educate the population on this pilot program about how it can be successful, not how much money it can save. But I would want to encourage the conversation, bring it to the table and create a real success plan for us, so we're out of the gate, we are successful.
The next question is for Ms. Jada. Let's say the city government decided to increase knowledge of climate and energy to our Quincy residents. May three or more city departments should have a role in such a campaign and specify what each of these departments would do to raise awareness. May you say it to us?
Well, I would definitely look at studying all the resources in the city and I would study all the past initiatives and I would again, I would look at other cities and how they deal with this. And we could compile all of that data and then we can choose exactly what we want to do based upon the cost savings, what it would do to reduce energy, what it would do to help Quincy be much better at protecting itself in the future against problems. And I would look at all of those issues and come to a decision. I crunch data at work all the time, I design surgery over the internet, and so I look at all these things and it comes down to spreadsheets and basically looking at your options and determining what is the best way to go.
The three departments I would be looking at would be constituent services, which Larry Louzo from the mayor's department has, getting consensus of whether it be through email, through mail, a single body, the first body, to actually get this information out, but also looking at planning and community development, Jim Gaffey's in the planning department. How are we going to institute new public buildings, new things that come in front of the planning board, and how to initiate energy efficiency? And also Public Works, DPW, what are we doing with our infrastructure improvements and how do we elaborate this together? All three departments must work together. And I probably would say that every department in the city is going to be involved in this process. We need to continue to educate and have everybody on the same table, on the same playing field. Be careful if one department out without keeping the other ones in tune with this, this is something that has to be at every department. So constituent services, getting the information out to all of you. Thank you.
City initiatives need buying by all the city departments, but let's make sure we value our nonprofit partners, like the organization Quincy Community Action Network. The planning board manages projects that cross multiple departments, so we'd like to engage on this. I strongly advocate Quincy to become a green community and to hire an energy manager. Our public building department has been innovative in this area and showing that our energy manager is a great resource. I would suggest the Public Works Department and our private schools. John Sullivan at DPW has done a terrific job with his public outreach campaigns, utilizing QA TV, social media, and the DPW newsletter. Do you know that's one of the top hits on the city website? Our students are able to affect change for our future and often can educate their own parents. As a city council, I think it's important for ourselves to be engaged on this. I pride myself on my communications platform informing my constituents, and I would promote these messages through my website, monterreforest.com, my e-newsletter, the social media channels. I also serve the Massachusetts Municipal Association Energy and Environment Committee, and we recommend engaging them in the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We have resources available to our municipality, we need to engage everybody to promote the environmental awareness and improvements for our community.
I do want to acknowledge that DPW, public buildings, planning and community development, those are all important, they have a willingness, but that's to implement these programs. And we need to build a bridge between these departments that implement and those that educate. And so the first of the three would be the Quincy Public Schools. Again, you know, if you start with the kids and you're educating them on the importance of whatever initiative we take, whether it's the composting or the recycling, through that you can go back to the parents and from there to the family as well and expand out from there. Other libraries are a great resource, we have a number of them across the city here, and they can allow for residents to come to them and not only be educated, but then tap into those resources, like with the DPW or with planning, to implement any programs that they would like to do in their own personal homes. The third would be the Asian Outreach Coordinator Department in the city. You know, close to 30% of our population here in the city are Asian-Americans and a number of that percentage does not speak English. And so working with the Asian coordinator is important, because anything that we try to implement here in the city, we want to make sure that everyone in our community is able to take advantage of that and to take part of that. Thank you.
So we're all touching upon some of the very similar things, education, Public Works, cross-pollinating the information throughout the departments, but it all starts at the top. The mayor's office has to be actively engaged in the community and want to make our community a green community. So we need the mayor to take an active role. We need the mayor to be part of the climatemeers.org organization so that we can learn what other communities are doing and bring it back here to Quincy. You can't do anything in Quincy with the multiple departments unless you don't have a leader who wants to lead us in that direction. So we have to start at the mayor's office. Public Works is another important one, because as we're developing these things and instituting them, we have to make sure that it's actually happening. So we have to actually engage and make sure our departments are all working together, and education is always going to be part of the solution. Because as we are educating our students and educating our population, all of those are outreaches to everybody in our community. And when we do all those things together, we are an educated community, we are bringing the right solutions here to Quincy, we're learning and actively engaging with other communities and being part of the solution, bringing those solutions that can be retrofitted here into the city and making them happen here today. The other things that we have that are resources to us here in the city is obviously our internet, and we also have QA TV. It's another arm that we can reach out to and educate people on, so seniors that may not be using the internet will also be able to be actively engaged. It's important that we send out, use those newsletters that we're sending out and letting people know what the things that we're doing and how they can get more information. We have to work collaboratively across departments to be able to do this, but it all starts at the top with the mayor's office and a council that actually engages and a council that actually engages the mayor to make sure that this is something that we're doing for our community, not just for today, but for the future, for our city.
I would start with schools, because it's the biggest user of energy that we have within the city. It's been reported that as much as 60% of our energy uses comes from our schools. So that's where we need to not only get the word out, but obviously that's where a great degree of the savings may wind up coming from in the years to come. So the education of the youngsters and the parents and that, all the administrative and the professional staff, all the employees of the Quincy Public Schools, all working together on the same page, turn lights off, shut off electronics, things of that nature that could make a tremendous amount of difference as we click towards that 100% goal. Obviously, Public Works, coastal resiliency, all those aspects, whether roads need to be elevated, seawalls, making sure our infrastructure is properly being maintained and developed. And so Public Works needs to be a significant component. Planning not only to obtain resources, grants, but also to make sure that the private sector is doing what it can as development comes into the city. To be mindful that we are a city of 27 miles of waterfront. And we are a city that wants to be towards our goal of 100% renewable energy. So schools, Public Works, planning, public buildings, of course. And as been said by others, obviously every department needs to buy into this.
Thank you. So maybe the last question was, how do we implement? So given the disasters in Houston, Florida and Puerto Rico, how can Quincy make sure it feels better with stronger hurricanes and floods? Ninety seconds.
This is a very good question. At this time, of all the catastrophic events that have happened over the last 10 years, I don't think they're for sure. Little bit to get a background, we need to have a plan in place. I know that Quincy High School and Little Quincy High School are great areas for center points. But what we really need to concentrate on is our seniors and our children. Those are gonna be the two people that are, you know, who will take all these natural disasters, take all the people that are, someone like myself, could probably get out of the house. But we have to have some type of plan in place for our children and our seniors to go out in these buildings. We need to build this plan in place and have, you know, a benchmark on how do we do this. And it's something that we need to institute at the mayor's level, at the city council, at the school community level. Everybody's on our consensus for this to happen. It can happen at any point. We had a lot of hurricanes that have gone through in the last few months, I guess I could say. And we always get the tail end of that rain. We get the rainstorm. Sometimes it goes out to sea, but sometimes it hits us. We get, you know, a whole day of rain. So we need to institute and have something in place. And that's gonna start with protecting our seniors and getting our children to the right places. We need to have center points. I would like to install ward councils that, you know, this is your ward, this is where you're gonna go. Just so we have a plan in place. The at lodges will oversee, the three at lodges will oversee the ward councils and the mayor's office as well. So we have a plan in place and activists like yourself can be involved in this process. But we need to look at this a little deeper. Thank you.
Go back to the other one, council, and then a few columns to be in all those different places. 27 miles of coastline, we have a lot of opportunity to improve our coastal resilience. March restoration, tide gate repairs, seawall repairs, and ensure a lot of building and floodplain is done in compliance. I think served Boston Harbor's geographic response plan and saying, this is a lot of what I've done above and beyond and work outside the council chamber. The city of Quincy has a habit of mitigation plan. We have an evacuation plan. The entire Boston Harbor region has an evacuation plan. It is about partnerships with our emergency management officials as to what our needs are for this community and what the response is during a storm event. Residents in the neighborhood, post silent, we're on the phone before every storm, talking about our plan, our game plan, tide gate controls, what we can do for flood storage, condensatory storage. I think there's, we have a lot of vulnerability in Quincy. The city is taking a look at our seawall conditions, putting in for our grants and funding these repairs. We have been very consistent. We have been cleaning up, and we're talking about filling the catch basins. This Texas deal here was an area of chronic flooding. We've seen some mixed beginning improvement. Cleaning catch basins, fixing the tide gates along Broad Street. We talked about, we were saying all the natural breakwater solutions. What else can we be doing that's a new solution for our area? Coastal waters, we know the impact for the Quincy cultural community is real. We have a lot that we can be doing in organizations like this. And getting them engaged as well is beneficial for all of us.
As your current counselor, I was on the council when we approved $147,000 of funding to repair and to reinforce our seawall. Like my colleague said, we do have 27 miles of coastline here. We have very old infrastructure. We need to make sure that we're staying up to date and that we have the protections in place when there is a storm that comes down the pike. That is matched with $441,000 of state spending. And that is one step in the process. But the other is to make sure that whatever we do set up, we're checking constantly. The last rainstorm we had not too long ago, but a couple of weeks ago, I got two calls within one hour of each other, 9:00 in the morning, that there was flooding in the Wallison area. We sent somebody out, we cleared it out. But the problem was, is that the storm drains were clogged. All the leaves are coming down right now, ended up clogging some of those outlets, and that's what caused the flooding. So once we got those clogs out, everything was fine. But we can be proactive. We also need to make sure that we're enforcing these things that we set up for ourselves to protect us, and then we're going out and checking them consistently. You know, and we do certainly have emergency preparedness plans in place. But our climate is changing, the world is changing. What could work five, maybe even 10 years ago, may not be what's gonna work for us in the next five years. So we need to make sure we're staying consistent on top of that emergency preparedness plan. I understand the administration is going through it right now to review it. And as your counselor, I want to make sure that we hear from folks like yourself, so that whatever new plan comes down the pike, every year, every six months, that we're staying up to date as much as possible as to what to expect with the weather as the climate continues to change.
So many of the things that my fellow colleagues up here have been discussing are things that we should be doing day to day in the operations of the city. But we also have to be proactive in understanding what's actually happening within our community, within our state, and the educational environment. UMass Boston right now has a study that's going on. And they're working with professors and doctors in the Netherlands to research how we can prevent Boston can prevent the floods of the future. When you're looking at Hurricane Sandy, what's happened in Texas, what's happened in Puerto Rico, it's really about being proactive about how we can protect our coastlines in Massachusetts. And Boston right now is talking about, and it's a study that's happening right now, that I don't think Quincy's at the table,